All right, I'm going to call the meeting back to order to reconvene in open session. Welcome everyone to the Amory School Board meeting tonight. The first item on the agenda is the introduction of new staff members.
Okay, well you should see behind you or in front of you depending on where you're sitting. We have all sorts of new faces with us today. We started last year doing introductions of new staff members to the district, so we're going to continue with that tradition here. You don't need to do anything other than stand up and give us a wave. We won't make you do a speech or anything. That's actually at next month, no just kidding. Just stand up and give us a wave so we can see you and then I'm sure the board's going to want to give you a welcome. So, in order by area, we have Clubhouse, we have Megan Marquand and Sophie Porter. Have they been able to join us? Either of those two? Okay, don't see those two. Elementary school, Anna Melberg and Jenna Kaiser. I don't think Brian was clapping, but that's okay. He was going to stand. Intermediate school, we have Nancy Tritt, Peggy Lundgren, Nate McNauton, Dustin McMurphy and Olivia Peters. I'm not sure who's here from that crew. Thank you. Intermediate school and middle school, Catherine Bartel. Middle school Wyatt Komonic and Crystal Nygon. And high school Lindsay Myers. Oh, Leslie Jacobson, did I miss? Leslie Jacobson. There we go. Okay, these are the new faces plus a few more that aren't with us here this evening. I want to personally welcome you to the district. I know that I've sort of already done that and I wanted to give the board the opportunity to do the same, so I'm going to turn it over to them.
Well, thank you for coming tonight and helping us to put a name and a face together and we really appreciate you coming amidst crazy circumstances and joining this district and thank you for your service to our students and their families.
What a year to start, but thank you for coming on board. And thanks for coming in. I know it's, you know, a little bit different and out of your time, but it's nice for us to get to see you guys and to see what's going on and hopefully you guys get a little bit better idea of who we are and if you have, you know, problems, concerns, questions, you can always feel free to try a friendly face. Thanks.
Thank you.
We hope your journey with us is a long one. We like long-term employees here and we hope that this works out for you well.
Welcome everyone and thank you for coming tonight.
Okay, you can stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like, but they won't be offended if you leave. Unfortunately, not all of us have that luxury. Thank you.
Yeah, good night.
Okay, the next item on the agenda are the consent agenda items and who had the vouchers this month?
I had the vouchers this month, so I will make a motion to pass the consent agenda items. Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, the vouchers are approved and the next item is the, are the community comments. Is anyone signed up for community comments tonight? All right then, on to administrative reports. Start with Mr. Gould.
All right, I'm stealing Mr. Prince Thunder with as much as we have him here. I should just let him give the sports updates, but volleyball, girls golf, boys soccer and girls tennis have all completed fall play. However, we did have some exciting moments. Sophie Whitley and Hannah Bottelson at number one and number two singles qualified for the state tournament respectfully. And then also our girls varsity tennis team had kind of a surprise when after the sectional champs, Oakley Regis had to drop out literally at the last second. Our girls team got to travel to Kohler this past weekend for the state team competition, which is, you know, a pretty big deal as well, so congrats to them. And Jaden McAlpine just recently qualified for state in the girls cross-country meet, which runs next Saturday. The Division Two race will be in Colby. So, some good things going on with sports still and the football team is still going, playing as well. Building updates, we've completed our two state mandated safety drills. These were both done as discussion-based drills, which we've through studies determined to be much more trauma-sensitive for kids. So, we've done our two state mandated mandated safety drills. Homecoming 2020 is done and over. Students and staff definitely made the most of it. A huge thank you to our lead supervisor Heidi Williamson, who coordinated all the events along with the student council, but the kids did a fabulous job and for the events that we were able to do, lots of fun. Parent-teacher conferences were conducted via telephone. We ended up with over 245 individual phone calls between teachers and parents, which is very exciting for me. The number was, was better than we anticipated. We received a lot of positive comments, both from parents as well as from the staff. Our district in-service that time, the following day was focused on primarily mental health, remote learners and giving individual teachers opportunities and breakout groups to really troubleshoot issues that they were having in our COVID world. It was an extremely successful day. Future events coming up, we have the end of our first term next Thursday, November 5th. We have our November 6th district in-service and then we also will be putting out a Veterans Day program that will be posted live on Amory Cable and on our Facebook networks, on social media networks on November 11th. And we also have National Honor Society induction the following Monday. I do believe the date is the 16th. So, that's it from the high school.
As Josh said, we had some fun and exciting athletics at the middle school and we're going to be kicking off middle school basketball and hopefully middle school wrestling very soon. In the middle school, we've been doing a lot of new adjustments and changes with our Warrior Advisor. We have a Warrior Advisory Group that meets now every day and I've been really pleased to see how well that, those connections are going on with kids and staff and social-emotional learning down to building connections to, and actually giving some kids some silent sustained reading time while they can come and meet individually and independently with individual students. We're still really heavy into our standards-based grading movement with our PLCs and today we had an in-service on how to take the essential standards rubrics and get them into a format for parents that are more accessible for them to understand a little bit more about what those standards represent. Trying to hold a parent meeting, which I'm scheduling about the time that the grading period is done at the trimester. I've had, I've held about eight to 12 of them and they've been sparsely attended and so I'm hoping that maybe when the report card actually comes out, we'll get more information out to parents that they'll understand a little bit more where we're going. Lots of other just various meetings going on, just like Josh said. We had an excellent in-service and we have a really good one coming up and we're real excited about Derek Francis coming back to speak to us about being a culturally respectful school and responsive school to all the needs of kids. We're kicking off our bully-proofing curriculum again with our assembly, I mean our advisory groups again too. And this would be our 16th year we kicked off the program. We've, every year it kind of develops and grows and right now it's being a little bit more embedded into just more about character as opposed to just the bullying parts itself. We have a big Warrior Way Assembly on Friday and we're pretty excited about that and a celebration for kids. It's kind of going to be a fall Halloween-type theme. Students in each advisory are designing their own scarecrow that they're going to put out for the November period and we're excited to see that. And they, they've been designing their own cheers, so when they present their thing, they each have their Warrior Advisor cheer and then we kind of see who has the best spirit, the best cheer and then the best whatever their outcome that each month is and they get, they get the trophy, the traveling trophy at each grade level that moves around. It's been pretty fun to see. And you know, again, I just want to touch base on all the different work that it's taken to open up schools and do it safely as we can. And we know that's been a challenge and it continues to be a bigger and bigger challenge. But we, we couldn't have better kids and better staff and they're doing an amazing job. And these kids have just been excellent and very respectful and working really hard to try to meet the needs that we're, expectations that we're giving them. And you know, I, I just think, you know, the plan that, that you put together and that we're trying to implement across the board has been excellent and I've been really pleased with how well our students, our staff are responding to it. So, unless you have any questions, I'll move on.
With the standards-based grading, are you moving into that for report cards this?
Yes, yeah, this would be, well, I know Leon Elementary's been on it for many years. Ms. Shock and I are both implementing it this year. And so, most of the students right now, there's about three or four different standards in each class that have been assessed. Some classes two, some three. Most of the classes have about five to eight standards that they will address sometime during the year. And you know, it's their first time through it, so there's growing pains still. But, and right now there is a, there is a report card that I can run and take a look at and it's, it's taken some time to get that to work correctly. There is a way that we were, from what I understand, that once we're ready, we can turn it over so that a parent can run a report card at any time and see where their kid is. They can run a, it's kind of like a running report card where they could see where's my child right now and they can, it will spin it for just them. We have to figure out how to do that though, but.
And then, so like the rubrics do, like has the parents, have they been shown any of this yet or?
Yeah, I've had a, going back three years ago, I started having parent meetings and parent-teacher conferences and that's why I said there was like 12 of them, I think, because I would do two, two in the fall and then two in the spring. And then I did it for three straight years. And as we were growing and, and it started out saying this is kind of where we're going and this is why we're going there and this is the strategy and the reason behind grading towards a standard. They've been sporadically attended. I think the most handled is about 15 parents at any given meeting. Tried to promote it a lot of different ways and then did some mailings and things. I'm, I was planning to do one at this parent-teacher conference, but it just got really hectic with COVID and everything else. So, my goal then would be is to run a Zoom meeting invite to parents when the report card gets out, so they can better understand it. So, but yeah, we've been doing our best. It's, it's a difficult concept to grasp your head around if you've never seen it and, and I think that's true for our parents too, but.
And the rubric that you're working on, you're hoping will simplify that for them to understand it or?
Yeah. You know, we spent a lot of time on why and I think I'll be spending more time on what does it mean now? And how to, where to go. Basically, you know, we've, we've, every teacher in the district in all their classes have, whether you're on a standards-based report card or not, has determined which standards are essential that we're saying these are what our kids really must absolutely know. And if they don't, then we have to be able to reteach to make sure that they show mastery or if they're doing well, we should look at extension activities. All that work is, is done, but taking it then and, and putting it into a report card that makes sense to parents. And so, what I require our staff to do is to say, okay, if, if you have a standard that you're saying is that important, you need to create a rubric that goes with each standard that shows what does a one, two, three or four mean? And so, there's a document that explains that. So, I'll be going over that quite a bit, saying it's a website. I really thank Greta McCarty for helping me. We have a website designed, I can show it next month, I think, before we break out. This is what, what the standards-based report card is about and then what, what will parents look at? Once they see a score, they can go online and click on the, and look at each rubric. I'm sure they're dying to be all over that when we send it out, but it's there for them if they needed it.
We know, like we talked about this was kind of be the track for it and I was just, I'm wondering how, I guess, how it's working out with all of the extra work with COVID. How is that working out for you guys and?
Well.
Josh has, you know, kind of touched on.
Right.
What's the help for his staff and?
We've been working on it for a long time and so I think that the staff was prepared. We did talk about do we, do we need to back it off a year because of everything? And staff pretty much unanimously said, no, let's move forward, we're ready. I think the staff like it. I think it's, is, parents have sometimes a transitional problem saying, okay, what does, what does a one, two, three or four mean? Is that an A or B? And they want to know an A or B and I get that. And I guess the explanation I would always say is, well, what does a B mean? But a three, you can see what that means right here on the rubric. That means your child can do this. And they're receiving in every class, four or five different grades for each subject level. I, I think it's, we were ready, so I mean, the work was already done before COVID hit us. You know, we've been in a PLC model now for five, six years going forward from solution tree conferences. And I think it's because we started out slow, slowly and the staff had a lot of buy-in and they had a lot of decision, they got to make a lot of the decisions on where we're going. And so, once we were ready, they were behind it and I think that the work has been fine. I think it's going to be, it's still growing though because they've never done it before and we've never been on trimesters before and, you know, we're on a brand-new schedule and a brand-new grading system under COVID. It's just been a little crazy.
Yeah, what a crazy year to start.
Yeah, yeah. Had we known, yeah, who knows? But, so I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, I just, you know, I, you know, our job too with the, you know, the board is to make sure that you guys are not being overwhelmed either. If that means target dates aren't necessarily being met then.
Yeah, I think our target, I think our target date will be met, but what we're doing right now, we also understand that it's how we planned and theoretically it's what we thought would be the best. We'll have to step back and go, well, let's fine-tune this, let's fine-tune that. And I'm sure what we're doing next year will be different and what we'll be doing two, three years from now will be very different. And then, you know, the parents will have a lot to say too. The parents will come in and say, well, this is what I think and we want to hear from them and, and that's going to take time. I think they want to have to see it first and go through. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm really excited about it, but it's, and it's been a lot of work. And I guess to put in perspective, we were a little bit behind other middle schools. Most of the middle schools in our conference are already grading on this system. Although there were some, there were many that are already doing it and have been doing it for years that started after we did and that's how careful we've been to make sure that we're doing it exactly right. Not that it's going to be perfect, but I think it's better than it could have been. And I've, some districts are having some horror stories about how they've implemented it.
Yeah, I know you guys put a lot of time into it.
Yep.
I will piggyback on just a few of those things as far as the standards-based report card. As you know, we are also moving in that direction. Our AIM program has done it from its conception. We followed a lot of their lead. Sue Beal Meyer and her team has helped us a lot in forming our essential standards. But as Tom said, as a district, we've really been working the last eight years on identifying those essential standards. Chris Stratton helped us a lot in the, at the beginning in identifying those. So, it's been a process and we're going to, our teachers have talked with parents during parent-teacher conferences and we have a companion document that will go with the report card that explains the grading system as well as jumping on with Mr. Benson in the middle school, their multimedia on the website. So, I think it'll be really good. A few things that are coming up at the intermediate school. Also wanted to just say that our parent-teacher conferences went very, very well. We had over 91% participation. Lots of positive feedback on parents. I think they really enjoyed being able to either pick up the phone or dial into a Zoom meeting, so that was great. We have some more standards work to do. Reading Language Arts has new standards that are coming out. If you remember last summer, I told you Reading Language Arts, FIAID and Financial Literacy are all standards that are new and are coming out. So, we'll be working with teachers to identify those standards and get them into our current curriculum and resources that we're using. We have Halloween coming up this week and it's going to look just a little bit different. Each of our classrooms still are having Halloween parties. We're going to do a virtual parade. Mr. M., our guidance counselor, is going to go to each classroom and videotape each of the individual classrooms and then we're going to put it all together and make a parade via the internet. So, it, it all works out in the end. Also, somewhat the same, the VFW for years has come to fifth grade to present flags on Veterans Day and they're not able to come into the building, but they are still wanting to give us the flags. So, we will do the same. They're going to bring the flags to us and we will have individual classrooms do a presentation and then we have a PowerPoint that the VFW put together a few years ago. And that is very good, so we'll be doing those things. Any questions? Thanks.
Okay, same song, different verse. Parent-teacher conferences were amazing at the elementary school, 98.5% attendance. Most of our families did the Zoom, but we also had some families do telephone conferences. We discussed it in our administrative team meetings and in the future, I think that we will offer families the option of Zoom or telephone in, in addition to face-to-face. I think it really worked for some families that are single parents and needed to call in or, you know, can't get daycare at that time of day. So, we were really, really happy with that. October 15th in-service day, we had a rotation that, a three-part rotation that focused on technology, which is our hybrid model of instruction. Fast Bridge was our benchmark assessment. And then we had team meetings and prep time for staff. Very, very positive comments from the teaching staff. As in, as orally mentioned, Halloween will look a little bit different. We are going to do a virtual parade. We will actual, actually parade, but we will be making sure there's social distancing and the children will not be out in the highways this year, unfortunately. But we hope to have it all together, so by the end of the day, we can post it and the kids can see the, the parade. And it actually may give them an opportunity to shine a little bit more because we're giving them the opportunity to say something, "Happy Halloween" or to give the Hulk stance if they're Hulk or whatever. So, it'll be fun, it just will be different. Thanks to our second grade team, our wonderful leaders and our kindness campaign is again doing a second annual S-October collection. We are collecting socks that will be distributed in our community and at the, all of the buildings in district. And the food shelf, we have a box that is like this tall, almost full of socks. So, thank you to our second grade leaders for helping with that. And this month at Leon, we are working on culturally responsive practices and we are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. And so, some of the different activities that we're doing in our building, the children are hearing announcements in Spanish. I had to go back to many, 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 many years to when I took Spanish in high school and Mr. Hawkinson has helped me with my pronunciation, so we've been doing some Spanish speaking. In the morning, I had a little girl say, "Mrs. Meyer, you are doing a really good job with Spanish." It was so cute. We also have kids sharing research projects about family traditions and culture of our Hispanic population. We have a hallway display that is highlighting our Hispanic culture, leaders, traditions, et cetera. It's been really fun for our, for all of our children and so that has been, that is one of the elementary goals this year that we are focusing on. So, any questions? Thank you.
Good evening, a couple updates from the Pupil Services. World Child Development Days will be on an alternative model this year, obviously, due to the pandemic, so we will not be having an in-house evening where parents complete a survey and students are often observed in play or informally assessed. Instead, the identified parents of students who are between the ages of roughly two and three will be sent a letter as well as the screening tool, the Ages Stages questionnaire that's been used in the past. And then we will encourage them to send that back in the self-addressed stamped envelope and we'll also follow up for those completed surveys with a free book as has been the practice in the past. We expect that we're probably going to need to do a little more following up this year than in the years past and we're trying to find creative ways to advertise and incentivize that communication to occur. In terms of the actual assessments themselves, as I've mentioned here before, our early childhood team and others in our district have become very creative in finding ways to conduct assessments and accomplish our work even in the world when it looks different and we need to do less face-to-face assessments and meeting with parents. So, we'll continue to get creative and make that occur so we can meet our obligation in terms of child find. Moving on to some curriculum news, we are looking at a curriculum called Positive Actions and have actually scheduled a training for November 6th. That is a social skills curriculum that is designed for use with our students that need direct social skills teaching. As I often explain to many of our staff and as we have conversations around social skills and teaching, there, there really is no one and-all, be-all social skills or behavior curriculum or program. Really, it's a set of strategies and tools that teachers use their skills in communicating with kids to instruct them based on what they need. So, to this end, this Positive Actions curriculum is just another tool. Why? It's been a while since we've introduced some new tools for teachers that are, are teaching those kids that need social skills. We've also had some, some turnover in staff in, in the last few years and we've got some teachers that are either re-entered the profession or are fairly new into the profession. So, I think this will give them some new training, some new tools to really reset. Also, the third reason is in light of, you know, an unknown future, oftentimes it's nice to have built into a curriculum, as so much has happened over the last six months, some content and resources that would be good in the event that we would have to pivot and do something virtually. So, there's some resources with this new curriculum that would help instructors do that as well. Because as you know, or could imagine, that conducting social skills lesson over a virtual platform is not ideal, right? We've all learned that ourselves, I think, over the course of the six months in, you know, learning how to socialize in a different way. Other than that, continuing the theme with attempting to support paraeducators, we are going to have paraeducators and special education teachers complete a work-style survey. This is not evaluatory in nature whatsoever. This is simply another tool where a teacher fills out a questionnaire, the para fills out the questionnaire and then they compare their answers. And really, it's about sharing how you work, your preferences. So, the goal of this is just to have a communication tool that both teachers and paras can fill out and then just encourage that conversation, sharing, because we know that people that know more about one another, their preferences, their styles tend to work better together and that's what we want to have happen in our classrooms. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you. The next report on the agenda is the summer school report. Mrs. Shogren is not here tonight, so Dr. Durfler will go over the summer school report for 2020 and the upcoming 2021 summer school.
Okay, I will run through the report and then if we could, right after that, move up our donations up ahead of the school farm presentation and that we have a donor here, so they wouldn't have to wait around through all of the next presentation. So, the 2020 summer school report is very brief because we did not have summer school for obvious reasons. We had to cancel to create as safe an environment as possible for our students and staff. We simply were not prepared to open our doors for kids and in hindsight, that was the right decision because we put our efforts into being fully prepared for September 1st and here we are, having completed our 36th day of the school year 2020. And here we are, having completed our thirty-sixth day of the school year 2020, 2021. So I think that was the right move. But we are planning to do summer school 2021. So a couple of items here. First, from last summer, we were able to collect a little FTE, which is a finance piece for driver's ed, which we did. We did a virtual and an in-person option. We did some FFA activities. We had freshman orientation. And we did weight training with all sorts of safety protocol. So we did collect a few FTEs that way. In 2021, we have a schedule that's set. End of our school year is earmarked for Friday, June fourth. We take that next week off to be prepared for summer school because doing it on the seventh is simply not realistic for students or staff. And we start on the fourteenth. And if you'll notice on the schedule, whether it be the physical one in front of you or up on the screen, we have three weeks of June summer school, the fourteenth, the twenty-first, and the twenty-eighth. And then when we move into the month of July, that's when we move into swimming. We've got swimming starting on the fifth, right after the fourth weekend. And that's same spot down in New Richmond. And then that moves us into the month of August where we have the week of the second and the week of the ninth. And then we fire back out for in-service a couple of weeks after that. And then we have start of school on September first. We are gathering interested parties at this point in time. We're sort of rebooting to see who wants to teach. We'll see what we can run out there. And then in the springtime, we'll have a calendar that has summer school offerings. And we'll put it out there as we always have through community ed. And folks can sign up. And we're looking forward to it. It would be another large step back to normalcy because we were very sad to have to have canceled it last time around. But we're hopeful that we'll be able to do it this time around. Any questions for me on summer school?
Okay, as you indicated, we'll move up to the action item before we go to the school farm presentation, which is donations to the district. Megan Barnhill Coquendorfer is here to present a donation to the district in memory of Nate Brieselhoff to the School Forest Project.
Good evening. Thanks for inviting me. So on behalf of the Amory High School class of nineteen ninety-two, we are making a financial contribution in memory of our late classmate, Nathan Brieselhoff. He had an untimely passing due to cancer. And the class came together to raise money and was talking about ways that we can honor his memory. And apparently, he has a great passion for the outdoors. And so someone had suggested we reach out to the forestry program here at Amory and look at making a donation to that program, kind of where it all started for him. So on behalf of our class, we will be making this donation. And we're excited to see what kind of project comes to fruition from this. So I will turn it over to Sue and she can tell you more about what that will look like.
So Megan, on behalf of our Outdoor Education Committee, we want to thank you and, you know, on behalf of Nate, for thinking of us and helping with this project that we've really been thinking about for many years. So I want to just tell you quickly about it because this will be something that, as a board, you'll need to approve. So we would like to, to build a pergola. And it's something we've, we've wanted for a while. And we've picked a great setting that I think Nate would really love. It's a brick patio that's kind of at the beginning of the trailhead. So it has a view of the forest, a prairie, the lake, and then with the apple orchard right behind it. It's, it's actually bricks that came over from Lakeview, from our school downtown. So there's names of people from the community. The kids love to read them while they're sitting there. So our goal is to have Mr. Ganges' class build, build the structure. We met about a week and a half ago with, with Josh and Mr. Sigsworth, George. Yeah, just some really great brainstorming went on. And I think they have a really good idea of the size. We're looking at some bench seating that would be on one end of the pergola. And we do have some cement benches right in that area as well. So enough that a classroom could come and sit and gather and enjoy a really peaceful part of our school property. So right now, we're currently waiting for a bid because lumber is really hard to come by. It's very expensive. So they're hoping to build it third term if, you know, if the bids come in, okay. So, you know, we know that the twelve hundred dollars is not enough, but we do have a little bit in our school forest fund. But just to put a little plug out there, if there's another organization or individual that might like to contribute to our project, we would, you know, we'd be happy to hear from you. So we're excited and looking forward to a, a great piece.
Is there a, can I get a motion to accept the donation?
I'll make a motion to accept the donation to the School Forest Program.
Second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the donation is accepted. Thank you very much.
There were a few other donations as well. And I can walk through those with you at this time. School nutrition donation, an anonymous donor, five hundred dollars to district's lunch and milk assistance fund. And assistive technology donation, an anonymous donor gifted the following assistive technology devices, a sequencer, angled switch communicator, power link wireless switch, and Big Mac style switch. So all of that's been donated. And that gets us to the end of the list. And we'll need a formal motion to accept all of these donations.
I'll make that motion to accept those donations.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All donations are accepted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving backwards now a little bit, we'll go to the informational item, which is the school farm presentation by Mr. Meyer.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting me today. So I've, I've wanted to talk about this for a while. And it's a vision that I've had for a long time. And started, I guess, started the, the vision a little bit last winter. Mr. Dierfle and I went to New Richmond to see their school farm and got a lot of different ideas of things that maybe we want to do and, and things like that. And hopefully, this could become a reality someday in the future. And there's some opportunities that we didn't see happening before that possibly could have something like this happen. And so I'd like to talk a little bit about our vision and, and what we're thinking of and, and how it could impact our students, our school, and our community. And so hopefully, it'll be something that we can, that we can, we can kind of look at this and, and think, you know, when, I guess, when we do something in the ag department, it's usually, you know, go big or go home. So, so we're, we're looking at something that I think could make a true impact on, on, on our community and something that will definitely help our kids. And so when, so I, I put together kind of a little presentation that kind of talks about some of these things and, and some of the things that I think are, are important for, for our community to hear and, and see where we could maybe go with this. And this, this is all the planning stages. This is just envisioning what we, what we're hoping that will happen. I wanted to talk about our mission and what we try to do in, in the agriculture department. We prepare students for employment in agricultural-related fields and further study in technical and collegiate-level agriculture programs. Our classroom experience is inquiry-based and dynamic by combining practical training and academic preparation. Heavy emphasis is placed on helping students develop a sense of responsibility for themselves and for our community. And I think all of our, our program has always tried to do that. So put out there some, some goals of what we're trying to do with the thoughts of what we're trying to do here. The first is to develop a farm-to-table program and a farm-to-school program at the same time. So what does that mean? The farm-to-table program is, is, is the first part of our program, which is to, our, our community is based around agriculture. If we, if we look at our community, it, it, it has the backbone of agriculture. It's, it's, it's how we were, were established in the first place. And if we, and if we look at that, it's important for us, even in today, it's important for us to realize where our food comes from and, and to make sure that we keep a strong bond between, between us and our agricultural background. And so, so the farm-to-table program is, is designed to, to basically get every student K through twelve involved into our agriculture program in some way. And we've always tried to do that with our Food for America program and some of the other programs that we do. But we want to kind of take this to another level. And we'll hopefully show you some of our thoughts of what we're, what we're trying to accomplish. The other part of that program is the farm-to-school program, which is basically taking our farmers, our local farmers, and, and seeing if we can tie their, what they are selling and put it into our school program. And so that the, the school lunch program is using more of the local foods that we have here in our community, that we are helping promote the local food program, or foods that we, that are being produced in our community and, and making that, that connection between our community and our school. And we think we have some ideas of, of how we could maybe do that and make something that will be not only beneficial to our kids, but to the community as well. We're going to allow, this will allow our students an avenue to explore career opportunities. Agriculture is the number-one industry in the United States with over twenty-two million jobs. And whether we know it or not, we are all affected by agriculture. Every day, we all eat and we all wear clothes. And so it's very important to all of us. And it's very important that we keep that connection. And we need to show the kids the opportunities that there are in the agricultural field. And this is another way to do that. We want to provide experiential learning opportunities at the highest level. When we're looking at Bloom's Taxonomy and we're looking at how to teach things, we find out that kids that go up the ladder are more apt to find career success. And so we, we're hoping that through this type of program that we can, that we can have even more of that kind of success. We also know that we can, I've, I've been doing this and talking to our career and technology education areas, all the way from the business area to the family consumer area to the tech ed area. Everybody can be involved in this program. And I think that's important to, that it's not only going to benefit the agriculture program, but it will be beneficial to all of the programs in, in our school. We also want to provide even more, even more reasons why Amory is a destination for our families to grow and to prosper. I don't, you know, when I came to Amory, I wanted, I came to Amory because I wanted to be here. I think this is a community where I wanted to raise my family. And we want that, we want that to be the, the backbone to, to how we get, you know, we want everybody to kind of feel that way when they come out of our schools. Statistics show that when students show ownership in the school, then they are more apt to stay in that community. And so it's, for me, that's a really important thing. I, I, I love teaching our kids to do all these different things, but I also want them to come back and have their, you know, raise their families here. And so I think this is another avenue to do that.
Now, as Derek moves through the presentation, so everybody in the room knows how we're going to make this happen, the presentation that he's giving, the land across the street from the high school, there's thirty-three acres of land. That's where the district would want to do this. Now, I'm going to be the first to say, and I'm going to say it a couple more times probably, we are not interested as a district in purchasing thirty-three acres of land with taxpayer dollars. So that's not what's going to be happening here. We are interested in securing that land through grants, and we're already on to some of that, and donations. And in order to do all of what you're about to see, we need land to do it on because we don't have any land on campus right now. It is being used. So I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Meyer now.
Yeah. That is, that is important to know. Thank you. Yes, so there is an opportunity this year where the, the land has actually come for sale. And, and so we're looking at getting the message out of what we're, what we're trying to envision. And, and hopefully, this will lead to people getting excited about the, the thoughts that we have and, and maybe making some, you know, doing some networking that will help us, you know, see this, this, this vision come true. Because I think it's, I think it's in our realm of, of something that can actually occur. And, and there's lots of different ways to do it. And I know that I can't do some kind of vision like this by myself. I need lots of people to, to, to want this to happen as well. So that's why we're talking about these things. So one of the things that we're, that, one of our first visions is something that I've thought about for a long time is, is, is to start an actual Christmas tree farm on part of the property. We would have every kindergartner, this is, this is just, you know, thoughts and ideas of things. But every kindergartner would, with our agriculture program, would plant somewhere between two to five trees. And then the Amory Agriculture Department would actually take care of those trees until when those kids become juniors. Then they would actually get one of those Christmas trees that they planted. They would get it for free that year. And then we would sell some of the other Christmas trees that, that those kids planted. And so this would be a cycle that would just keep going. And, and after about ten years, it would actually be something that would actually bring in some, some revenue. I know it's a long-term process, but the, definitely a way that we can get kids to, to think about being a part of the, of the program and being a part of our community. And it's, it's been one that I've thought of for a long time and I thought would be really kind of fun to do and, and very educational for not only my agriculture kids, but for the whole school. We also, there's also, you know, we have an orchard already, a small one in, in the intermediate school. But we would like to, as part of the program there, also have an orchard with some walking paths. We have some beautiful spots in the, in the back of the property there that something like that could happen. It will, it's something that, very educational for, for our students as well to take care of those different types of fruit trees and, and things like that. And something that I think would be a, a real nice enhancement to the, to the area as well. We would also like to expand our school gardens. And we, you know, as part of the, the grants that I am looking at and, and writing, there's, there's quite a bit of funds for, for projects like this where we can actually hire some of our students to help take care of these during the summer and, and, and do that kind of work. And I think it's, you know, and then we use that, a lot of those products to feed the kids at the school. And, and then, you know, also to sell some of that as well. So there's some, some thoughts of being able to do that as well. So we're kind of hitting all the different areas. And so, you know, we can also have some, you know, we, we won't have a lot of livestock on there, but we could have maybe some animals on there that we could raise. That's what New Richmond does. And then they raise it for the school. And then they, I believe they did about four or five steers last year. And, and so we could do something like that. I think it's important to know that we would buy the, you know, so the animals would probably come from our local farmers. And then I don't really want to get them as a calf and then raise them for two years. We'd probably get them when they're a little bit older and then, and then finish them out. That's how we'd probably do it so that the kids get that experience of being a part of that. And, and, you know, the way we look at this, this is educational, it's an educational opportunity and something that would benefit a lot of our kids. I also, this is one thing that I've Uh, I also, um, this is one thing that I've, I've thought about for a long time is I, I want a facility that we could actually, uh, we have a lot of kids that want to show at the fair, but they don't have the means of where they can keep these animals. And so we could, um, we could actually, uh, keep, uh, some of their goats, sheep and hogs right at the, at the facility. And, uh, we'd become kind of four-month farmers where the kids would, would bring them in, in, uh, February, you know, January or February, somewhere in there and keep them till August and then they would leave. And, uh, the kids would have a great place to take care of those animals and get them ready for the fair. We have a lot of kids that want to show, but it's very tough because, um, uh, we, we have some farms that have really helped out a lot of our kids, but, but, uh, uh, it would be nice to have even more opportunities for those kids to be, you know, to know that they have a spot that they could actually do that. And, and this would be something that'd be very beneficial to, uh, to a lot of those kids that really want to show and be a part of that program at the fair. We also have the horsemanship training program. Right now we have a wonderful, um, place, um, that we're able to do it. But, um, just like everyone else, we're all getting older and we're not sure if we're always going to have the, that, uh, you know, that, uh, place to do it. Be nice if we could train our horses right there at that farm. Um, the animals come in for a little bit and then we train them and then they go home and, uh, vice versa. You know, it just kind of keeps the cycle going. We, I think we could set up something really nice there. Um, I can envision something, uh, you know, where it, uh, is very beneficial to a lot of our kids that want to be a part of this program. Right now we do about sixty, we train about sixty horses a year. So, um, so it is a big program and, and, uh, very beneficial to a lot of kids. This could also be a place where, you know, there are some sites there that we can still build homes, you know, for, um, and then also build some of the facilities that we want, uh, on that property. And so, um, there are some opportunities, um, in the back of, um, to, to actually, uh, have Mr. Ganji, uh, put up a few more buildings and, and, uh, so that can also help with, uh, some of the costs that we have and things like that. So, um, and then my landscaping classes obviously can do some of the landscaping around those buildings and things like that. So there, I think there's some, some real opportunities is there as well, um, for that. And the upkeep of all those kinds of things as well. I think that's a important part of it as well. So when we're looking at this, um, you know, the more we thought about it and things like this, it would kind of come in phases. Um, phase one would be, uh, property is purchased and then we started, you know, we start with things that are a little bit easier for us to do. So we'd probably start with our Christmas tree farm, uh, with the, you know, with maybe the kindergartners or however that's worked out. And then the, the school gardens can be established, even our orchards. Uh, we can still grow crops and have the tillable soil with our soybeans and corn, just like they are right now. Um, and then we have at least one more site for sure that, um, can be established for, uh, Mr. Ganji's classes to, to do more. Um, uh, to do another house site. And we do have some potential for some, some more, uh, uh, building areas as well for, for Mr. Ganji on that property, so. Um, phase two, um, that's when we would start building some of the buildings. Um, and, uh, so we would have, uh, sixteen-horse stall, uh, pole shed and, and construct an outdoor arena for the training. The livestock building is constructed for beef, goats, sheep and hogs. These animals will come in early spring, late winter, students will have the chance. I've talked about that already. Um, but that would be part, part of phase two. And then phase three is I would actually like to build a classroom over there with a school, uh, with a storefront on the front of it where we can, um, where we can actually sell, um, some of the products, not only from what we produce, but also from local farmers, um, going from, from honey to, uh, apples to our vegetables and, and also, you know, people could sell, you know, farmers could sell some of their beef there, beef jerky or pork or, you know, whatever they have from their farms, we could actually sell it right on that spot. Our, our goal would be to advertise for our local, uh, farmers in this, uh, community and make sure that it's always, uh, set up around that, uh, around that. We would actually be able to, uh, you know, the, the school store itself would be a great for our business department as well. So it's, it's, uh, going to benefit a lot of those kids as well. So these are some of the visions that we have. Um, I'm not going to spend all my time with, um, with all the benefits and stuff. It's kind of hard to read on there, but, um, basically statistics show that kids that feel connected to the school are more likely to stay in school. Um, we envision programs that will make students feel a part of the program, increase the school engagement and positive attitudes about school and learning. And it provides children with opportunities for social and emotional growth, improves life skills, self-esteem, self, uh, sense of self and ownership, taking ownership in something. It's a greater opportunity for, uh, necessary experiential and hands-on learning. It supports school readiness in young children. So there's the benefits to the community. Uh, there's also the academic part of it that, um, there's an increase in knowledge in the science and STEM concepts in early childhood and K-12 settings. Uh, provides children with understanding of gardening, agriculture, growing cycles, seasonality, local foods and the environment. Enhanced overall, um, academic achievement in K through twelve settings, including, including grades and test scores. Um, it increases opportunities for innovative teaching platforms for core subjects such as science, math and language. I was talking to the teacher from Medford that has a farm and she says that on her times off, that she has students that, uh, she, she has independent study kids that stay there and, and elementary kids come over and they teach the kids things right from that, uh, right from her school farm right there. She has a classroom set right up on it. And, uh, she said it's just been a, a delight and the, and the students, uh, really enjoy it and the, and the, the elementary program really enjoys it as well. So the kids win. Uh, the farm to school provides all kids access to nutritious, high-quality local foods. Uh, so they are ready to learn and grow. Farm to school activities enhance classroom education through hands-on learning. Uh, students get what we call the experiential learning at its highest. The local farmers, they win because, uh, we promote the, the local, uh, the local farms. And, uh, we try to help out, uh, we can, we can find potential employers that already, um, have skills that they need and a place for local farmers to sell some of their wares. And then the community wins. Uh, like I talked about before, I believe a program like this is something that, um, it, it becomes bigger than, than just the program itself, but it becomes a destination for, for people to, when they're looking at a place to, uh, raise their families, they want to come to a program, you know, to a school that has, you know, these kinds of opportunities. You know, a lot of the opportunities that we've, that we see in, um, already that, that Amory has. And this will just enhance what we're trying to, trying to do. So like Mr. Dierfler said, this program is, is designed to not cost the taxpayers any money. What we're trying to do is we're trying to raise grants. We're trying to, uh, get donations from, uh, from people that want to support such a program. And, uh, this is just the beginning of, of what we're trying to accomplish.
One of the next steps in the process on November eleventh, Derek and Josh Gould and myself are going to meet with a group of folks that do ag for a living. And we're looking for their feedback in regards to what is it that we need to do and what is it that we're missing? Because they're the experts. They do this for a living. Because it sounds all well and good and great, but they might say, "That's not going to work because of such and such." We want to hear that. We want to hear it upfront rather than later on. And at that point, we'll be further ahead in our knowledge base. We'll be further ahead in our grant writing and see where we stand. We're, there is no action required of you at all this evening. We're not purchasing the land across the street, so please know that's the case. We are interested in a school farm though, and we need a spot to do it. And that spot would be perfect if we ever decided to formally do it. So questions that you might have for Derek's? I know that's a lot of information and you might have questions kicking around your head.
This, this seems like it'd be a great program. Um, and you'd mentioned you went to New Richmond. They have a farm. You know how they got it started or how they, they funded it initially?
So it's kind of, kind of the same way. They went through donations and they actually were going to put it right on to the, the school itself. And the, um, there were some people that didn't want the farm right on the school property itself. And so then they, um, they got the city involved and then now it's out by the airport.
They have forty-nine, sorry Derek. They have forty, forty-nine minute classes and their commute there is about ten minutes and commute back's about ten minutes. So they only truly have a half hour of time. Our blocks here are well in excess on that on time. We would be able to get all of this and more happening and happening well in that timeframe.
Yeah, it's, we're, it's really set up quite well for, for the, for Amory, you know, to, to do something like this. But they started off with, starting with donations and, um, and then I think maybe the land was maybe even donated to them. Um, and I, I don't know for sure how the whole thing, uh, went down, but, uh, but it was, you know, same thing in Medford. They started with donations and the, the vision of what they wanted to do and, and it eventually happened. Um, they raised over three hundred thousand dollars for their, for their program over in Medford. Beautiful program that she has over there that she, she started it kind of the same way. We have to get our, we have to get our thoughts out there so people start, you know, knowing what we're trying to do and what we're trying to do for the kids. Um, this is a program that I think, uh, is something that would benefit a lot of different people, so.
So after your meet, your feasibility meeting on November eleventh and you find that it's a good idea, is that when you submit your grant afterwards, your application?
So, so we're already starting with the grants. So I have a meeting on, uh, November tenth, I believe. And so this is, that's, uh, most of the grants are due in January. And so, um, already starting the pro, starting the project. Um, so we're, we're looking for, and we're looking for more grants as well. So we know that it's not going to just be one grant that's going to do the whole thing, but, um, so I, you know, I'm not a professional grant writer and so I need some good people on my team. So we need to put together, I, I call it the barn board. Um, I need a barn board is what I need. I need, uh, people that are going to help me, um, uh, make this happen.
And that's part of what the group on the eleventh could become. And we're hopeful that their wisdom on this will send us in the right direction. The only thing that would slow us down in regards to the pursuit of this is if you had great concern and you wanted to throw up a stop sign, you certainly can do that at any point. That's your discretion. I've, I believe this is the next inception in the school district of Amory of house building. And this would be that and then some, because this is an ag community through and through. I think it would be a wonderful thing for our school, for our community and most of all for our kids. I think it'd be fantastic.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, um, a lot of times when we, um, talk about visions like this and, um, even still today, um, the word farm seems to carry or agriculture seems to carry a connotation of, um, animals and manure and dirty. Um, but really agriculture, um, as Mr. Meyer pointed out, touches every one of our lives every single day. Um, and it's so much more than just raising animals and scraping manure and plowing a field. So, um, some of the, the ideas that Mr. Meyer laid out here as far as an orchard and our local food sources and, um, some of the fair animals, uh, and the landscaping part of it that goes along with some of the houses that can be built or the, the actual facilities there itself, those. Um, for some kids that may need, maybe not have that drive that they want to pursue that post-secondary education and they don't, they're struggling and they don't really know what they want to do for a career. And a lot of times I think Mr. Meyer's found out, as Mr. Ganji found out, we take these kids out, um, to do landscaping. You don't think that landscaping is, is part of agriculture, but it's, it's huge. And a lot of kids have actually started their own landscaping business and done quite well for themselves. This gives such an opportunity instead of having to find people in the community that's, um, been kind of the way that the program has worked in the past. Um, this would give our kids an opportunity to just walk across the street and have those opportunities right there. Um, a lot of this is really good. I, I would assume that on November eleventh, a lot of more logistics would be laid out.
Yes, and so, uh, November eleventh at, from six to seven in the Amory High School Auditorium is when we'll be, uh, presenting. It won't be just me presenting. It's have a lot of my students that will be presenting. I have, uh, some students that are, uh, very excited about this and, and want to talk about their story and, and why they're in agriculture in the first place right now. So I, I think you'll be intrigued by, um, their stories and, uh, what they can actually, you know, why they think something like this is important. I think we, we often forget that the trades are very important and we don't have kids going into the trades as much as we used to. So Mr. Ganji's program with, uh, building homes, uh, landscaping with, you know, electrical work and plumbing and things like that. We don't always think about all of those kinds of things. And, um, I think it's important for us to, uh, know that that's an important part of, of our communities and, and we need to find people to go into those kinds of areas. And I think that, um, you know, a program like this kind of, you know, helps, uh, promote those kinds of programs as well. And so, um, yes, so at the school farm presentation, we'll go through some of the statistics and we'll also, um, let you hear from some of the kids that, that, uh, have, have just benefited being part of our programs, so.
The face of farming is changing and it's, um, especially in this county. We're going to see the face of agriculture, um, not in the way that we know it today. In the next five to seven years, uh, a dairy farm the size of our dairy farm just simply won't exist. Um, it's going to be too hard. These kids deserve opportunities that they're not going to be able to get, um, out on farms that are our size.
Yeah.
Great.
Again, no actions required, just informational and we'll keep you apprised.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. And if you would like to, you know, we'd invite you to come on November eleventh, Wednesday. It's a Wednesday from six to seven at the Amory High School Auditorium. So thank you.
Thank you. Will that be televised too?
Go ahead, tell.
Oh, sorry. Will that be televised too?
We haven't set it up that way, but we're televising everything else. Perhaps we can make that happen. I don't know. I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Tracy and she's become WCC.
We'll make it happen.
With the high school.
All right, well, thank you. Have we reached out to the landowners across the road yet and talked about price negotiation? And how that's going to work as far as, we're doing this on grants. So it's awful hard to say to somebody, "I want to buy this and, but I don't have the money."
Yep, we met with the landowners and their Realtor. That's got to be almost six weeks ago now and told them our timeline is we're meeting with you for an informational and action would follow after that if that's what we're going to do. And they said they would let us know if there's any other bidder on the land. And I haven't heard anything to this point. They were very excited about it. They're ag-minded folks as well, uh, based on what their family has done in life. So we've had conversation with them. They're well aware of what's going on.
And any conversations of land contracts or willing to do parcels at this point or?
We haven't gotten that far.
We haven't gone to that part yet because we're still trying to put our board together and, and figure out, uh, where we want to go from here. So, um, so this is more of an informational and then get our group together and then really attack it. Um, but, uh, it's a slower process, you know, than what we probably, you know, should or, or could. But it, it's something that we have to go through. We have to go through this process. So we'll do it the fastest that we can, but we want to make sure we do it right. And so, yep, so, but I'm excited about, um, the opportunities. Hopefully they, hopefully it's still there, but hopefully.
The really neat vision is amazing. So consider all those pieces, so.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to the rest of the action items. Um, the next action item we will be discussing is the staffing considerations for hybrid and remote learning models.
I must say this is not going to be nearly as exciting as a school farm, but I'll do my best. You will see a presentation on the screen or physical version of it in front of you. When we met last night, last month, I should say, we were about a couple of weeks into school and we had visions of staying in the green all year long. We still have those visions. Though we want to be fully prepared for things such as hybrid and remote. We have increasing numbers in the county. We have increasing numbers in the state and increasing numbers. We have increasing numbers in the county. We have increasing numbers in the state and increasing numbers in the nation. So obviously we got to be prepared. So that's what this presentation is and at the end you'll see a resolution. It's an action item for you to weigh in on however you see fit. So staffing considerations for hybrid and remote learning. First of all, please know in a hybrid setting, and most folks probably know this by now, we'll have two cohorts of kids, a Monday, Tuesday crew and a Thursday, Friday crew. That's very simple, uh, very straightforward. That's been our telegraphic message, so to speak, since early August. That's what we were going to do. In regards to a staffing model in a hybrid setting, the certified staff in a hybrid setting, remember we have school with kids in the building four of five days of every week. Staffs here all five days of the week because they're still teaching. It's just a reduced population of kids. On those Wednesdays, they're still teaching because they're still providing instruction to go home with those kids or they're communicating with those kids who are remote because they're all remote on Wednesdays. Support staff, we still have school four of every five days, so we still need bus drivers to bus kids to school. We still have instructional paras. We still have paras out at recess. We have paras at lunch. We still need custodians. We still need all of our support staff. So there isn't anything that happens in regards to staff during a hybrid model. We need them all here. It would just be the reality that it might look a little different. And on the next slide, you'll see how it looks a little different as we move into a hybrid model. If we moved into a hybrid model, our paraeducators would be working twofold. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, they would be assisting with, we're trying to set up a staff childcare setting. We have seventy-five kids of staff, staff of all types, not just teachers' kids, that are in need of care. If we don't have care for our staff, we won't be able to have school because those staff will be obligated to be home with their own children. So we're going to provide that setting here at school. They're also, still have their regular duties. Some of them are classroom paras and we still have recess. We still have lunch, so we're still going to need their services. So we're going to divvy up the three dozen or so paras, and I'm working with Nina, Cheryl and Orlie and Tom to make that happen, uh, and make sure that we can do staff childcare at the same time. School nutrition staff, we're still feeding kids four or five days a week here in person. But the days that kids are not here, we're still providing meals in the form of a meal pickup, just like we did in the spring. So we're going to have that on Wednesdays and for folks that are, for instance, not here Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, we'll have a meal pickup for their meals for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And that will happen every week and we need staff to be able to do that. Custodians, we have kids in the building four or five days a week and people in the building every day. We still got to clean our buildings, so custodian doesn't look any different. Secretaries, I, I used the statement when I met with the Compensation Committee for Support Staff after school today. Someone's still got to answer the phone, so we still need secretaries and they'll be in the buildings. Bus drivers and van drivers, we're still going to be doing routes. The only difference is there's a reduction in hours there certainly because we're not picking anybody up on Wednesdays. So that's one of the five days that that would look different. And then clubhouse staff, even through the worst of situations in March, all the way through to today, I have never received a directive, an order of any such type from the State of Wisconsin or Department of Children and Families that says close your childcare. I'm not so sure what it would take to close the childcare, but they seem like they want us open no matter what. Nina and I were talking about scenarios of tsunamis and earthquakes and such that would close us, but we can't think of anything. We're open.
I doubt that would even close you.
Maybe not, so we're going to be doing clubhouse. Now, remote learning looks different. We're in the red. We've got an upsurge of cases in the county or the district that put us there in this model. Students learn remotely from home five days a week. The district provides the devices and the combination of online and physically printed materials. In some classes, they're live streaming at the middle school and high school. Now, what does that look like for staffing? Certified staff are still here each and every day to provide instruction. They're simply doing it without the kids here. And in many cases, they're providing that through remote instruction, not the same way we did it in March, April, May. We're much further along because remember when we did this in March, April, May, we had forty-eight hours to plan. We weren't going to do that in a high-quality way at that point. Support staff, most will report to school for in-person, uh, to support teachers and to support students. Some staff will be furloughed. Some staff will have reduced hours. In the remote model, on the next slide, you'll see paraeducators. Paraeducators would be the staff that would work with the, uh, staff childcare setting. And in some cases, they're going to be working as instructional aides, instructional paras to support teachers and other office personnel. There would very likely be a reduction in the number of staff needed and a reduction in the number of hours worked. That would result in potential furlough. Pre, uh, school nutrition staff are still preparing meals. If we're remote fully five days a week, we're still feeding our families for whoever wants that option. We're going to have staff in to prepare those meals and to have them picked up. That would result in potentially less staff and less hours, which could result in a potential furlough, but certainly less hours. Custodians, met with George today. We'll have a reduced need for custodians in that we don't have kids in the building five days a week, so there's less need there. So we'll build in a rotation of custodians sharing that work. That would result in potentially less hours and potentially a furlough. We would cross that bridge when we got to it. George has got a schedule all created. Secretaries, they would continue on. We still need secretaries on the phone in the offices. They would not have a reduction in duties or a reduction in time needed here. Bus drivers and van drivers, we would not need during a remote model bus transportation because we're not picking up kids. So that would most certainly be a furlough situation. I don't know that they'll be surprised by that. Um, that's probably something on their radar. Uh, and as an aside, in the next two weeks, I'm meeting with all of these employee groups with their supervisor and we're going through all of the details of what you're seeing here now, so they'll know full well before we get to that point. Clubhouse staff, clubhouse will remain open. If clubhouse closes by order of the state, it would look different. It would be a furlough situation. But again, we've never heard them say that. What's the difference between a layoff and a furlough? A layoff, generally a layoff involves the elimination of positions. We're not eliminating positions here. Affected staff are no longer considered employees and layoffs are generally considered to be permanent. A furlough is a mandatory unpaid leave, which is usually temporary. Furloughs reduce labor costs during a critical time without incurring costs of a layoff. Questions to this point, because I know I've given you a lot of information as I get a drink here.
Um, unemployment, do any of our employees qualify for unemployment benefits if we were to move into that?
You're foreshadowing something that's coming up here real soon, so let me get to that in just a minute. Because that's a question that certainly lends itself here. The recommendation's going to be if a reduction in staff becomes necessary with the remote learning model, administration recommends that some staff be furloughed as needed. So here are some items that you need to know about furlough. Would furloughed staff still be considered employees of the school district of Amory? Yes, they would. The furlough is expected to be temporary and is simply due to lack of work or employees. For instance, bus drivers with bus routes. The district would expect to have staff return to work as soon as possible. Yes, staff will lose income based on working less hours or no hours at all. That is true. Can staff, can furloughed staff apply for unemployment? Yes, furloughed employees can apply for unemployment. It is the Wisconsin Department of Workforce Development's decision whether they qualify. We are not in the position to do that. The only part we play in that process is we confirm past employment, hours, wages. We don't say yes or no. That's not our jurisdiction. Will furloughed staff be eligible for benefits? Yes, they're eligible for benefits. The only trick is that they would need to pay for those benefits in a different way. Typically, those benefits are deducted from their paycheck each and every time. In this instance, if they didn't get a paycheck, then they would be needing to pay for that insurance. For instance, if you look at the chart, if they were an employee paying thirty-five percent of their share of the insurance and the district paying sixty-five percent, if they were on the family plan, they would need to come up with six hundred and thirty-three dollars to pay for their insurance. Now, please know that's not sixty, six hundred and thirty-three new dollars. They already did have to do that through their paycheck. It just looks different now. When an employee is working in the district, they come up with that in an ordinary way and it's not ordinary anymore if they're not getting the same paycheck. What about retirement? And this is my last slide. Furloughed staff will remain enrolled in the Wisconsin retirement system, although no contributions will be made in that there is no wage being earned because the district makes a contribution, the employee makes a contribution. You're still enrolled. It just isn't a contribution at that point. And does it benefit the district of furlough versus layoff? Yes, it does. The district will be experiencing a temporary reduction in workforce and will need the employees to return immediately once we return to face-to-face. Furloughed staff will be on the books and ready to return to work. If we lay off our staff, they are not connected to the district anymore. And what that picture would be, they would not have benefits, they would not collect a wage, they potentially might not qualify for unemployment. And when hired back into the district, they would start as a new hire on step one. So if you're a para here for seventeen years, you are now a para here in year one. And they don't want that and we don't want that. And hopefully not if it's an issue and we stay in green, but we got to be prepared with our employee groups. What we did in the spring, you graciously paid employees in March, April and May, we had forty-eight hours. It wasn't their choice and it's nothing that anybody wanted. And most districts did just that. From a financial perspective in the district, my recommendation would be to furlough and not do it the same way as March, April, May because it's the way to keep the district financially solvent. That again is your choice, but that is my recommendation. Lastly, the resolution, and I'm, I will, I will paraphrase it if you will. The first is that the Board of Education will not furlough staff that are in a hybrid model. The second part of the resolution, you will choose to furlough if we move into a remote model. The Board of Education will furlough staff if the district is closed in whole or in part due to the order of the county or the state. That could happen. That did happen in the spring. So we would choose to furlough at that point. And lastly, you would give me the discretion as to who that would be. Because for you to enter into a resolution tonight and identify specific employee groups or employees, if that's different, we got to do another resolution. I got to get you back together to do it again. You're simply giving me the discretion to make that decision on behalf of, of the district. And again, that's only occurring if we get into a remote model. Now, the district number, just so you have a frame of reference and perhaps you could put that up on the screen, Becky. We have over the, we do a two-week rolling window, so the, the window for us is a Tuesday to Tuesday and we post on Wednesday. That's what we've been doing since September one. We have in this fourteen-day window, we're in day thirteen today. We have five positive cases in the district and in the county, we have two hundred and thirteen total cases. If we have five positive cases, the limit can be three fifty before you need to go into a hybrid model. So right now, we're okay. Could we have more cases tonight or tomorrow? That's certainly possible. And we certainly get, have an upsurge in the county. The average right now in county growth spent about twenty-five a day. There were seventy-four this weekend over a three-day window, so that's about twenty-five. Could that accelerate? Certainly could. I'm not an epidemiologist and I don't know the calculus of that. I'm simply here to try and make sure we're prepared in case it does occur. Our goal is to be in the green. We're doing it one window at a time and hopefully on Wednesday, we'll be in the green once again. So that's my presentation to you in regards to staff considerations and if you have questions, I'll do my best.
One thing, uh, with the benefits of the insurance, um, you know, obviously if they're furloughed, they may not have the funds in order to pay this. So if they get called back, are, is there going to be a waiting period or anything like that?
A waiting period to be back into work?
Accepted back onto our insurance plans.
Well, they're, they're on our insurance plan. They're not unenrolled whatsoever. If there is a financial hardship surrounding that, that's likely to be an unemployment issue. But there isn't any us chipping in the money to make that happen. That's money that they're going to have to account for.
But if they, they have to opt out on not paying their portion of the insurance when they come back?
Like if it lasts, yeah.
What, you know?
Then we're gonna, we're gonna have to work with our third-party administrator on insurances to see what we need to do on that. Because there, there isn't, there isn't any assurances that we can provide to them that we're able to, A, cover that expense, guarantee their job back, waive that money. It, it, it just, a dangerous precedent would then get set. We would want them back immediately, I can tell you that.
What's that?
We would want them back immediately upon going back into yellow or green. We would want them fully back in action immediately.
Right, and I guess that's my question is when they come back, are they automatically reinstated into the insurance plan or?
I guess the best person in the room to answer that question would be Twyla. Could you come up and help us with that? Because Twyla works that world far more than I do and rather than me give you my best guess, let's get the real answer.
So just to make sure that I understand your question, you're saying if an employee was furloughed and wasn't unable to make their portion of the payment because if they're furloughed, they're not earning a check. And so at that point, they would be off insurance because the premium wouldn't be paid. Could they come back on once the furlough goes away and they're called back? Is that, am I?
Right, I mean, is there going to be a waiting period for them or they would just be reinstated onto our insurance?
Uh-huh, yes. Um, typically a new hire, their benefits start the day they start. And so the recall back, um, Health Partners has been really good to work with, not just us, but all of their people in the furlough situation. The way our plan document is written, um, as long as the premium is kept up, they'll continue. If the premium is not, you have to work thirty hours or more to qualify. Obviously, if they're furloughed, they won't be working thirty hours. They've made kind of a caveat to say, we understand you may not be working thirty, but if you can keep the premium paid, you can continue to have insurance. If they can't because of that, their insurance will end. When the furlough is done and they come back to work, then their, a policy would be reinstated.
Isn't there a grace period? Like if they can't make, if they're furloughed and they can't make their January payment, then isn't there a grace period? Like, don't they give them thirty days to pay before they just cut them off? So they could technically back pay once they get working again?
I could check on the grace period if, if there is that.
I, I don't, I.
Um, you know, there still is the district paying their portion and the employee paying a portion. So the district isn't going to pay eighty-eight percent if the employee's not going to pay twelve because the policy's going to end. And so I'm not sure on the grace period. Would it be something that the board would consider paying the portion and when they come back, double up their deductions until they're caught up? I don't know that I would recommend that. That gets to be kind of plain.
No, but they would have the opportunity to take their paycheck and pay, back pay the premium that they missed.
We would want to do as little of that as possible.
Yeah, I know.
Bookkeeping, I think that would get really tricky.
Administrative nightmare.
Well, they, in sixty days, they find another employment.
Yeah.
Then, you know.
And then we would never see that premium at all.
Logistics, yeah.
Right, so I, I wouldn't recommend the grace period part of it. I could check to see if Health Partners grants that. Typically, what they're saying is they'll kind of waive the thirty-hour rule, but the premium needs to be paid, so.
So how does that work for the employees? Um, I would assume that those premiums need to be paid on, let's say, the fifteenth of the month. So then does the employee have to pay their portion of it before that next month's premium is due? Or how does that work if you're?
Right, I, um, from your paycheck pretending you're working, um, I draw twice on the fifth and the twentieth for the next month. So you're always paying ahead. And so what I took out of your September check, paid the premium for your October coverage. And so basically, we would administer it the same way. They would have to bring me a check, mail a check, um, drop it off however they want by the twentieth of the month. And if they, if it worked better in a budget for them to give me the same amount they would have on their fifth of the month paycheck and then send me another one on the twentieth, if that's how their budget works, that, I will certainly work with anybody to make it work like that. They could just bring me their portion in one check. You know, I don't want to promote people coming to the. You know, I don't want to promote people coming to the building, so I would work with them to make sure that they got it. But we're always collecting a month ahead, so they have coverage.
That could be what you mean by your thirty-day grace period, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Other questions?
Yes, so if, if they're just given a reduction in hours, then they're not furloughed, but they're not getting. So then I'm assuming they don't qualify for unemployment because they're still employed, and they're still working, they're just having a reduction of hours. I guess I'm wondering how that would affect. And would we decide, I'd rather furlough four and keep four, you know, working pretty much close to full-time instead of just reducing everyone's hours? And then they have no way to make that money up?
A reduction in hours isn't an automatic disqualification for unemployment. They may still, if it's a reduction, they would just have to apply and, and tell them how many hours they used to work, how many they've worked in previous quarters. And they may still qualify. They wouldn't get the full amount, but it would be based on how much they're earning compared to what they used to. So that consideration. As far as staffing, I would recommend to do what is best for our teachers, what is best for support, not what is best for unemployment.
I met with each of the supervisors today, knowing full well these questions are now coming up. Yeah, just a, a random example that came up from one of those conversations, George Segsworth, in regards to buildings. We have four custodians that work at the high school. If we're in a remote situation, it makes no sense for us to have four custodians working at the high school on an eight-hour shift. So George will create a rotation where those services will be rendered, but it won't be four people at the same time every day. It'll be a rotation of people throughout the week. That's a reduction of hours, most definitely. But again, remember the benefit of a furlough. If we do a furlough, they're not going to lose their benefits, and we don't want them to lose their benefits. That's a big ticket on the open market, so to speak.
And the fact that they stay an employee, they're just having a pause in employment. We want them to come back, and they come back right where they left off. Laid off is done. You're no longer considered an employee, and you have to start all that over again.
Our hope is if we ever end up in yellow, we're going back towards green and not towards red. But I'm not in the business of making predictions with this thing. We've been, we're in some very strange land. I'll say, the, the real-life example is running a cross-country meet at nine o'clock in the morning to avoid a snowstorm in October. Sounds very two thousand twenty to me. And it was twenty-five degrees out. Josh came, Josh came into our administrative team meeting, he looked like the Michelin Man, he had so much stuff on. It was crazy. Other questions that you might have for Twyla or myself?
Just for you to touch on, you know, obviously if we go to AV cohort, how would we divide these students? I think there may be families out there.
Yep, we, we have done that work. We have six hundred and seventy-five in one group and six hundred and fifty in the other. Twyla and Tracy and Suzie and I literally got to work on a spreadsheet and started divvying them up by address. And we did that by address because we can assume that most families have the same address. We couldn't go by name because there could be multiple last names there. Once we divvied them up by address and plunked them into two groups, cut them in half. The trick was not just putting them in two groups, but having balanced classroom sizes and balanced bus routes. Because the first time through, there was a bus route that had three kids on, on the, on the Monday, Tuesday, and forty-two on Thursday, Friday. And that did not work. So we then had to redistribute, got it balanced out to the best of our ability, checked it, checked it again, and checked it again. We've got some very detailed people working on that, so it was very helpful. And then we put out the call to parents and said, if you've got a specific request, just let us know. And typically, it was childcare or work. We didn't care if they were Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday. It's great, they called, submitted those requests with Becky, and we made those changes, rebalanced and stuff. And there's still some changing going on a little bit, but people know exactly which group they're in, and they've known that for three, four weeks now. And it's information we hold never to use, but we're ready to roll if we got to. So yeah, we've done that work. It was, it was, it was quite a bit of work to get it done.
Part of the reason I questioned, made that question is, is I hope the community and the parents and all understand, it ain't that easy.
It was not that easy.
You guys did a lot of work to make that happen and that division.
Sure, because it isn't simple just to move this kid from this group to this group, because that kid had three siblings. So now you move that distribution over, and also then you throw in three classroom balances off and three, and potentially a bus route off. So it was a domino effect each and every time. So we were really, really, really happy when we saw kids that were the only kids in families, because those are the easiest to move. But that was not usually the case.
No, thank you so much for that.
The Hoskins didn't help. So there is a resolution here, and it's up to you how you wanna weigh in on that. Again, if you wanted to defer, we could do a table it and do it next month too, but that's up to you.
I'll move to approve the resolution to furlough staff if need be.
Second.
Can I make one more comment? So the first, the first thing says, will not furlough staff. If the School District of Amory moves from in-person to hybrid, there wouldn't be anyone that would be furloughed?
In hybrid, we would not be furloughing because everyone's got work to be done. In some cases, a ton of work. Parents are gonna be doing all sorts of work, doing staff childcare and their regular stuff. There's lots of work to be done. Food service is gonna be going crazy getting meals ready.
So there could be a reduction in hours.
Could be.
But not anybody, not.
We're not doing furlough in a hybrid, we don't have a need to. But in remote, there will likely be a need to.
Sorry. And, any other discussion or questions? Otherwise, I'll take a, is there a second? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the motion to, for the resolution to furlough staff is carries, and I will sign this. All right, next action item are athletics.
Athletics in the hybrid and remote, Jeff has all your answers to all of your questions.
All of them.
All of them. The trick is, we're trying to make district decisions. We're waiting for WIA guidance, directive in some cases. And at the same time, we're trying to match what the Middle Border Conference and our most commonly played opponents are all doing to all be on the same page. But everyone's situation looks somewhat different. We're not, it's apples to oranges in some cases. But Jeff and the other ADs have had a lot of conversation, the superintendents have had a lot of conversation, the high school principals have had a lot of conversation. But we are fully, a billion percent into uncharted waters in athletics. Absolutely, but.
It, it kind of goes with the territory. I didn't think we'd be talking athletics realistically when I presented in August with how things were trending. But hey, we made some memories this fall. It looked a little different, whether it was COVID, whether it was seven inches of snow, officiating a twenty-degree football game out there. I think Josh had a heated vest on, Brian had heated socks, and I, they put me in the sun. So it was, it was, it, it's been a fun fall. I think some of the greatest memories these kids are making are, some of them are outside the classroom. We sent the group off to state tennis, we had individuals to state soccer, had a playoff game the other night in some extreme temperatures. Jade McAlpine's going to participate in the state cross-country race. So it's been great, we wanna keep moving forward. Obviously, we need to be prepared for a hybrid model with how things are trending here. As we've talked, Mr. Benson, Mr. Goo, Mr. Duffler, myself, we believe it's in the best interest of our students if we do move into a hybrid model to participate in athletics still at the middle school level and at the high school level. You know, if we can get seven hundred and fifty kids here on a daily basis and be safe, we're finding that COVID is not necessarily spreading through athletics. We've seen that throughout the Middle Border Conference the last two months. It's been a fairly safe environment. There's been a couple shutdowns here or there with some area schools. But I think the, the reward outweighs, outweighs the risk in a situation like this. So we wanna keep moving forward with that. So the resolution, I believe you guys have a copy of that. Be it resolved, we, we give the consent for the district student athletes and coaches to participate in Wisconsin Interest Classic Athletic Association co-curricular activities to begin here in November. We did have middle school boys' basketball, they tipped off tonight for that season. Be it further resolved, we will comply with all safety measures and directives in order set in place by the WIA Polk County Health Department, Health Services, and the Centers for Disease Control for Winter Sports Activities. Be it further resolved, we will follow the guidance of the WIA in the Middle Border Conference. If anybody can make a decision, we will absolutely follow that. Be it further resolved, we will allow our student athletes to participate in the winter athletic season if the School District of Amory is in a hybrid learning format. Be it further resolved, we will not allow our student athletes to participate in winter athletics if the School District of Amory is in a remote learning format. We believe if we can't get kids here safely on a daily basis, we shouldn't be doing after-school extracurricular events.
Our concern has been from the get-go on athletics, we don't wanna do anything in athletics that cancels school, and this is no different.
So I guess, sorry.
Go ahead, I was just gonna say, any questions?
I guess one concern I have is, you know, so say we move to in the red for two weeks, and then we go back to hybrid. Can they resume?
Yep, so if there's like, if there's a two-week period, just like there is at the beginning of a season, you have to have so many practices before your first event. We would have to backtrack and restart those practices before the athletes could compete again. And that actually did happen to a Middle Border Conference school in volleyball. They shut down for a couple-week period, and then they started their practices again and started competing. So that is the reality, and we would follow the WIA guidance on that.
So I, I guess, you know, I mean, I'm just thinking this through. You know, if we have twenty cases in the district, which we want to, you know, kind of like everyone just take a break for a couple of weeks. But twenty cases in the district could certainly happen without, you know, affecting a, a team or even, you know, even a whole school perhaps. Maybe the twenty cases are in, you know, different schools.
I think it would be unlikely, if we had twenty cases in the district, we would likely have three, four hundred kids in quarantine. I mean, that would be a reality based on contact tracing. I think it would be unsustainable to be in red based on our metric and be playing sports. I think it'd be very unrealistic.
I also believe that there are unique situations and variables that we may need to consider when we make a decision. I like our metric that we have, but there's potentially exceptions to certain situations, and we would just come together and make that decision, I believe, as a group before we would move forward with something like that.
The one thing I'm noticing is, this one really affects the one we just passed.
Say that again?
The policy we're looking at, the resolution we're doing, the one we just passed, this really affects it as far as exposure with student athletes coming back into school and maybe causing us to furlough or go into the red.
It could, it could.
You know, one way we've talked about that is, you're kind of, it's, it's a cohort, we believe. You know, your JV basketball team is a cohort of individuals. They're not cross-contaminating with, you know, the wrestling team, boys' basketball, girls' basketball, those type of things. We believe that, you know, you could look at it from that lens too, but yeah, that's a realistic conversation.
And there's a school of thought that runs through the Middle Border Conference. If we don't have athletics in a hybrid model, they're getting together and doing all sorts of other things at that timeframe. If we're in a remote, that means we've got an enormous upsurge in the county and the district. I think at that point, a lot of parents are gonna weigh in and say, you're not going over there at all, you're staying right here. In a hybrid, I think we'd have kids all over the place. I think this is safer than not having athletics. They're a cohort, and they're accounted for. Is it safe, period? Absolutely not. I don't think anything right now.
I don't think that there's anything safe when you're talking about risk. And especially, I mean, here we are, I don't think that a lot of people thought that we were gonna be sitting here at the end of October.
Nope.
With schools open and running five days a week. And then when you talk about, you go to a hybrid, you've still got kids in school. And then you've still got kids that are still doing other activities, and then they're all mixing together. And I, you know, I, I'd be willing to venture, I guess, that if they're on hybrid, these kids are gonna be getting together somewhere and playing basketball or doing wrestling practices on their own anyway. And I think if we can keep it here and keep it controlled, that would be better than them off on their own trying to do stuff.
The trick's gonna be, and Jeff and Josh and Tom and I talked about this, doing these sports safely. And there's a lot of conversation going on about that. And most of the conversation, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff centers around basketball and wrestling. Hockey, it's deemed to be the safest of the three, in that you're geared up in so many ways. You're skating past, you're not in isolation with, you're not in physical contact, you have a shield, all of that. Wrestling does not look like that, nor does basketball. So maybe you could speak to what's being discussed in the conference about safety measures.
The biggest conversation is the mask, as you could probably imagine. And in hockey, they can purchase, they have a helmet obviously, so they can purchase what we call a bubble. And it keeps things confined. But in basketball and wrestling, you don't have that opportunity. As of right now, in all sports, a mask is required as long as there is a governor's order. Whether we agree with that or disagree with that, that's how the WIA is presenting it. Now, the WIA has presented some guidelines for us. I contacted the Big Rivers Conference, the Dunn-St. Croix Conference, and they have not yet made a decision. You know, in education, we're planners, right? But we have to be patient with this, and nobody wants to be the first league to make a decision on how we're gonna move forward with the mask. We have the guidance from the WIA, and most people feel safest to follow their direction. And that direction as of right now is, the governor's order runs through November twenty-first. We have some winter sports that start on November sixteenth for practice, but as of right now, everybody is masked up. We just had a middle school basketball practice tonight, and the kids were masked up. So, you know, again, whether you agree with that or disagree with that, that's, that's where we're at right now. And people are just concerned, especially with numbers increasing, we don't have a mask on, how this can all play out. So, and the Lakeland Conference is going towards, that's like your Clayton's or Clear Lakes are going towards being fully masked up too. So that's what I'm hearing. As Middle Border Athletic Directors, we met, and we had the idea that once warm-ups began and the game began, you did not have to have a mask on. And some superintendents were very hesitant of that. We have some superintendents that are associated with the WIA also, and people that are on the Board of Control, and so they're recommending that we, that we wear the mask. So that's, that's where we're at there. We did it all fall for our indoor events, which was volleyball. Different, when you think of exertion and whatnot, it's a, it's a different sport, and you're all on one side of the net. But, you know, like I said, no, nobody wants to make the decision, and we want somebody else to make the decision so we can all just follow suit. But that's not what's happening. So we do have to remain patient during this process.
We've been leaders throughout this process, and we've always sought to do what was right and safest for our students and our staff. This is just the next inception of conversation, the next set of events. We did it in the fall, we could do it in the winter, but we got some details to work out. This resolution simply gives us the go-ahead to participate if we are into a hybrid. Again, if we're in a remote setting, there's no debate in my mind, we're just not gonna be here, so we can't play sports.
And I believe Hudson, Prescott, they're both in hybrid models right now, both are participating.
River Falls is, and Ellsworth is looking at a hybrid. Pierce County and St. Croix have higher rates of increase than us, but we're not far behind them.
So those kids that, if we were in a hybrid model and you weren't here, you know, for those three days, you would still need to be here at practice?
Correct, yep.
At the practice time, you just need to figure out a ride.
Yep, transportation is probably easier for high school kids. We would still offer middle school athletics. You see like youth organizations, youth basketball is an example, youth hockey is an example, youth wrestling, the parents drive them to practice. I get it, the practice is a little later in the evenings, which makes it a little easier. But, you know, we're all gonna have to rise to the occasion a little bit and sacrifice a little bit if we still wanna provide these opportunities.
So I, I realize this is a little aside from this resolution, but whether it be in a hybrid model or we're fully in school when we talk about doing what's safe for our kids, and not only talking about doing what's safe for our kids or safer for our kids when we talk about masks and COVID. But how are we gonna balance what's safe for our kids with masks on, with the exertion level that we're seeing with basketball? And are, you know, if there's gonna be additional?
that we're seeing with basketball and are, you know, if there's gonna be additional timeouts given so that these kids could get a break and get some air or, but wrestling is a huge concern. I mean, I've had several boys that have wrestled and when you're down on the mat getting your face crammed into the mat and you're, you can't even keep headgear on, let alone masks on. And that is an exertion like, no, I mean, anybody that's ever wrestled knows that that's an exertion like no other to be stuck in air and trying to mask. I just don't know how that, we find that safe, safe at all.
Right, well, I'll, I'll be the, the first to admit that I do struggle with that also. But the guidance is the guidance and in, and in here, I'll just read it. It says cloth, cloth masks are safe with exercise. They do not decrease oxygen levels, increase carbon dioxide levels, significantly restrict airflow or cause heat illness. They will take time to get used to as they can be uncomfortable and increase the perceived effort of exercise. All right, but then the next bullet point talks about exertion. So this stuff is back and forth. Um, I do struggle with that. I think a lot of people do. It's a high, it's a high-intensity sport. You know, what are you gonna do when it gets ripped off and I, I don't know. I don't know what that looks like. I don't have all those answers right now. But I'm confident at some point, every school district is having these conversations, that we will receive some type of guidance. But I don't know.
I share your concerns as well. The other caveat in wrestling is you're, you're not going to be doing anything other than duels in once a week. So they're trying to reduce contact, so we're not going to a large-scale tournaments, which we ordinarily have done in the past.
They have seven duel meets.
Really, your contact would be with one other person.
Right, yeah, it could, yes. At a tournament, it could be hundreds of others.
If you're just doing duels, but I'm, so I'm asking, I guess, do we, at what point, um, do we as a school say our athletes, we that, that we feel that our athletes aren't safe doing that, then, and we say, seasons, no, we're not doing that? Is that even an option?
Well, I think if we, if we decided that we were not going to move forward with a mask on, we would struggle with having competitions with other schools if the norm was that they were wearing masks. We all wanna be on the same page with this.
I think it's too early to do that. We meet again on November 16th. Wrestling will not be in full swing by then. And we'll know more then and we'll bring that here because that's a very big point of contention throughout the state. Wrestling's the one people are talking about the most, which makes sense. The spring's gonna be glorious compared to winter. Everything's outside doing your thing.
I, I jokingly said with Coach Kelly, let's set the wrestling mats up outside. I was just kidding, obviously and whatnot, but it's very frustrating for our wrestlers. They get, um, seven competitions, so that's seven matches. A lot of times they go into regionals with 30 matches. And then if, you could assume maybe you're gonna get a four-foot, two or three, depending on your weight class, so you might get three matches the entire year. So we have to have a little sarcasm and, and have some fun with it along the way too. But hopefully we'll get this thing figured out. I, I think the WIA actually did a really nice job with the fall in providing opportunities, um, in a postseason for our athletes. I'm confident we'll figure it out for the winter, but we, we do have to remain patient here during this. I mean, we just received guidance down with the State Cross Country Meet, it looks like. They leave in, you know, a few hours on Friday. So we didn't even know what that looked like at all until this morning. So we don't really know what the winter seasons look like officially yet. We do have some guidance, but the details need to be worked out.
It's gonna be tough. I mean, my son was at the, uh, start of basketball practice today and he said just, just doing layups was worse than football conditioning. He said it's so hard to do with that with a mask on. So, I mean, I hope they can get, get used to it, but it's, it's, you know, there, again, a lot of exertion and when you're already hot and sweating and running up and down the court.
Yep.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be tough.
Well, I also jokingly said that when we're, when we're making these decisions, sometimes we need to go out there and do the layups and we need to be in the wrestling mat to see what that actually is like. But I think it's new territory for everyone.
So the resolution would be to compete in hybrid and not compete in remote.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution to participate in winter sports.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the resolution is, um, approved and thank you. All right, uh, the next item, um, is presented by Mr. Gould, the Business Computer Lab Purchase.
All right, I'm gonna give you guys the Cliff Notes versions here on the next couple of things. We're getting close to Tom Benson's bedtime, so I wanna get him tucked in as soon as possible.
Tom did not sleep, people.
First off, as you know, we have a number of successful endeavors going on, uh, in the district. Our CTE academies have done an amazing job, um, teaching career and technical education all throughout. And each of them has their own unique little area where they've excelled at. You'll see on, if you look at the years from 2020 to 2014, we have received over $215,000 worth of grant money for getting certifications for our student in real-world, uh, aplicable certifications. And we have done a number of great things with that. Uh, if you turn the page there, um, we've been able to, um, do those grant monies by a number of things. Our aquaponic system in the ag area, kitchen equipment, uh, welders, tools, supplies, uh, printers, computers. We've divided that money up very well. In this situation, um, our business ed people have saved their money up and they are, um, hoping to purchase some, uh, Dell all-in-one computers, Windows-based machines to furnish a lab. Uh, 26 computers there, they've got the money available for it. Uh, long story short, you know, we switched primarily to Chromebooks as a cost-saving measure for the district. But a number of the programs that we're still doing in our business program really need the Windows machines. This allows us to stay in tune with what the business world is doing as well as, you know, saving money overall with our, um, Chromebooks. So the, the real reason we're here is we really just wanted to highlight the amazing things that our CTE academies are doing and all the grant money that they've really taken in. And we would ask for your support to purchase these machines.
So I do have a question about this. Um, I think we talked about this back when we were talking about approving these Chromebooks and I think this was a concern that was raised, that the computer, that the Chromebooks couldn't do what our laptops were doing. And we were gonna keep those laptops.
We, we do have, we do have machines, we do have some, some carts that are out there roaming around with some of the classrooms. These are kind of, um, I would say they're like Mack truck computers. They're fast, they're efficient. We can do some of the things on the existing computers that we had, but even with those machines, they were struggling to run some of the Adobe programs. So even with what we did have, and these machines, we will not have that problem.
So it says funds received to, um, to be determined, we don't know yet. How much?
There's leg time on that from when you declare your graduating class to when you get the money. It doesn't happen instantly.
But it, it looks like for the past couple of years, it's been almost 50,000, so it will likely be more than 19.
Yeah, and she's already, the, she's got in an account the money for this specific purchase.
And the grant application's already been supplied to the state on this.
Yeah, 'cause basically you're always a year ahead with the financing. So with the money you get from the state, you don't know what you're getting till after the fact for the following year. So she's got all that in place right now, so.
Fabulous. Do I make a motion that we approve the purchase of the computers for the Business Computer Lab?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the, uh, Computer Lab Purchase is approved and now you're next again with the, uh, Early College Credit Program Request.
Okay, so we have two programs. We have the Early College Credit Request, which goes through the University of Wisconsin system. And we have the Start College Now Program, which goes through WITC. Uh, this is, uh, a program that is offered by the state. And I have for you guys today, 10 requests by students. We have five that are looking at taking a course through the UW system, the Early College Credit Program. And we have five students who are looking at taking some courses through the WITC Start College Now Program.
Are these the programs that, I mean, we don't necessarily really have a choice?
You don't have a choice. That is correct.
I would make a motion to approve these, uh, these requests. Noting we don't have a choice.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the, uh, College Credit Program Requests are approved. Thank you.
Well, thanks Dale for making that sharp.
No discussion there. All right, up next is the, uh, 2021 Budget Levy and Mill Rate.
All right, so what you have before you is our annual tax levy. Uh, pretty self-explanatory. I will point out that, uh, there is no re- uh, referendum debt for our debt this year. Sorry, referendum being levied for our debt this year. That doesn't mean we don't have debt, it just means that the district, we talked about this before, that we defeased or we're fiscally responsible to set aside funds earlier, previous years so that towards the end of, uh, um, the life of the notes that, uh, we would have enough money and basically a fund bounce to pay off that without having to levy that on our taxpayers. So basically, the overall, uh, decrease in our levies is due to that. Um, we did have, uh, a little decrease in our state aid they've got as well. Our mill rate also decreased mainly due to because of, uh, the, um, uh, not having debt, dropping off and not having to levy for the debt. And on the, the final slide that have reasons for the mill rate decrease, we did have quite a bit of, uh, increase in our valuation of our properties again. Remember, we had over 10% increase last year, this year we had a 7% increase. So that was, uh, pretty remarkable over two years. And once again, no, no referendum debt levy. And then even if declining enrollment, our declining enrollment exemption, um, of $446,000, we still saw an overall reduction in our state equalization aid of about 180,000 compared to last year. So, um, you know, financially, we're looking really, this year, um, the loss of our summer school, um, FTEs won't affect us. We are pretty much covered by our, um, declining enrollment exemption, that's part of that. But, uh, there's a three-year average, as you're probably aware, that goes into that. So hopefully next year we'll bounce back and have the same enrollment or right up where we normally are at.
On the floor of the, the legislature that was just introduced, uh, I believe today, there is a resolution to drop your lowest year.
Yeah.
And that's interesting because everyone's lowest year on enrollment is going to be the present year. So they're looking at dropping it altogether, which would be a good move, I believe.
Yep. It's kind of a whole, whole harmless, which are nice. And that's, but I've been seeing is that's the one thing people have been commenting on is that have that one year or at least say, okay, our enrollment stays the same each, you know, during this, this time. Because everyone is dropping at this time. We're not, not the only one in that predicament at this point, so. So really, that's all we need right now is just approval of the, the levy and mill rate.
So moved, Aaron.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, anyone opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next, uh, Short Term Borrowing Approver.
All right, uh, the resolution before you for this one is our, every year we have to approve, uh, a short-term borrow resolution in order to borrow to make through certain lean times throughout the year. The district only gets funding from the state and, uh, and taxpayers at certain times of the year. Every district is different when their shoulder months are or time are where they need extra cash just to get through until you get the A payments. So this ensures that we're able to meet those, uh, those times where we need to have cash flow.
I'd make a motion we approve the short-term borrowing approval.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Right, Short Term Borrowing Approval is approved and, uh, next on the agenda is Contracting of Snow Removal.
Here to ask your permission this evening to put out bids for the contracting of snow removal on the school district campus. Uh, here are the two big reasons for why that's before you and it has never been before. We have four snow removal individuals. Uh, we have Tom Olson, we have Chuck Berry, we have, uh, Jeremy Castleberry and Tom Dusek. Of those four, on a given day, at least three will always be driving bus and sometimes all four. And here's the problem, if we have a snow like we did the other day, that's okay 'cause that one was able to be removed between 6:00 PM and midnight. If that snowfall pushes out six, seven hours, we could be having a situation where we have three or four people that need to get in a bus and we don't have anyone around to remove our snow. The timing could be really, really tricky for us. So we're looking at contracting those services out to whoever wants to do such things. And you need to give your good graces to accept bids. The process would be, if you approve, to put bids in the Free Press on Tuesday, the 3rd of November. Leave that open for seven, 10 days and then you would choose who you would want to choose at the November board meeting. And we'll hope and pray we don't have a snowstorm between now and November 16th. So that's the timeline. If you have questions, feel free to chime in.
We could choose to not accept anybody, right?
Absolutely. You can choose to say, nope, we're just gonna do it ourselves. A bid does not obligate you to do anything.
And they, have they always done our snow removal? I mean, how is it always?
We have always done our own snow removal. Billy did it for years and years and years with Chuck's help. We're, we're actually driving equipment, uh, in some cases that's loaner from other places, that's 25 years or older. And that's also presenting an issue. If we contracted this out, there are some big-ticket equipment that we would simply not have to purchase in the next couple of years 'cause none of that stuff is cheap.
But to be clear, it wasn't our bus drivers that were doing our snow removal, right?
It was not.
It was somebody that was...
We have never contracted it out. It was largely Billy and Tom was working there in that location as well. But now we are so short on bus drivers, they need to get behind a wheel. And they're not here. And they're not here after school either.
And Tom has been driving bus for us as well, right?
He's been driving bus since the day he took over in that position over there. And since, since the day Jeremy and Tommy have been certified, they've been driving too. They drive every day, morning and night. So again, if...
I brought Tom into the CCRI for a little while, I mean, still working. It is a hard job, lost and try to get, work all day, you know, lost again. And Tom is a lot of the contractors that have all the tickets, I'm doing. That guy's been working a lot of his stuff, not only, it's really tough, yeah.
Not, we keep telling Tommy, works too much.
And, and we might as well look at the bids, I mean, decide next month.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, I'll move to, uh, propose bids for snow removal for the district.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, uh, motion carries. And, uh, the last item on action item is Personnel.
And you looked at those items in closed session. We have new employment contracts for Joanne Erickson in Sparks, the middle school. Margie Kelly for school nurse assistant, Nicole Cloppatic in the middle school academic and behavior support. Harley Peterson, seventh grade boys' basketball. Colin Shoals, C-team boys' basketball. Gretchen Wahlberg in the elementary office as a para. And resignations for Scott Ball, basketball. Margie Kelly's school nurse assistant, Nicole Cloppatic in club house. And Kate Wiesenbach as the middle school Sparks advisor.
Make a motion that we... Okay.
Which one?
One of us makes the motion, one of us seconds it.
I'll make the motion to accept Personnel Action.
Aaron's second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, the Personnel Action is approved and, uh, there is, uh, no reason to go back into closed section. So is there a, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, uh, roll call, Aaron?
Yes.
Shar?
Yep.
Dale?
Yes.
Keith?